Can't take any action at a town council meeting that isn't on the agenda as action. So they can't issue some type of decision or tell you what their policy position is on something that isn't on the agenda.
That's not what they're asking, but if someone asks a question during comments and is giving time for someone to give an answer back, two weeks, whatever, next meeting, I don't know, there's never any answers given back. There's nothing. He sits there with a smile, looking down, telling people to shut up, they're being moved, whatever. Nobody else answers.
That is not in order and it's not true.
Smile on it.
All right. I'm a happy guy. If I smile too much, it's probably just the way I've been brought up. Next, sir. Thank you, Mr. Gore. All right. Thank you.
How we doing on the half an hour?
I believe we started at quarter of eight, but we have about 12, 15 minutes left.
All right, go right ahead.
Ronald Castelli, 15 Choppin Street. I just wanted to voice my opinion on the opposition of this sewer project. This is my first meeting I was able to attend. And just thinking on my own family life, if we were notified this maybe a few years ago, maybe we could have put money aside for it. I have two kids in college. Also, there's another person on my street, they retired and just paid off their mortgage, so we put a burden on them. So you do have a lot of people here voicing their opinions, so I would hope that you would listen. Evidently, they are fired up about it. So I just wanted to voice my opinion and be calm about it, but listen to us, all right? Because this is going to affect our families and in the future. Thank you.
We have. Thank you. Anyone else?
Tell them again.
Okay, anyone else for the first time before we head to seconds? All right. Yes, sir.
Kevin Snow, 36 Edgewood Street. Are the councilmen, are you proud of how you represent the town and how you treat its citizens? Because from my vantage point, you say you smile a lot because you're happy. It seems smug.
It is.
It seems smug, it seems condescending, and we paid, we voted you in, and we all pay taxes, as do you. And at what point do we get questions answered? Should there be another forum on the sewers? Because, Mr. McGee, I go back to you because you're my councilman, the outcry is to say no. You have a chance tonight to make a difference in this town, to have its citizens look to you and say, he stepped up and did the right thing, when he may or may not have believed completely in that, but he listened to his constituents. I implore you to do that, and I'm a pretty happy guy, too. But I'm not smug or condescending, so maybe you guys could learn from that. Thank you.
Anyone else? For the first time, anyone else?
That hasn't spoken yet.
All right. Second, coming right up.
15 Holmes, 18 York Court. I just wanted to say, when I was looking into a plumber to see about plumbing opening all the piping to the front of my house, I was basically told, well, anything can be done, of course, but it can't be done. In order to do it, it's just so costly and non-effective. My foundation is well over 30 years old. It causes possible damage to it, structural damage and everything else. In order to get it to the front, it's way too much to go from the back around and everything, bypass the septic system, which works fine. To go through the front, they want to go along the back, through my stairs that go downstairs, come around, wrap around, grade it down, go out through the front foundation. I have an apron in the front, so I don't know how they're going to get through that, if they have to ruin it or not. He basically told me, it can't really be done. I asked him if he could put it on the letterhead, but we didn't do an estimate at that moment, but it was going to be very costly, if I could even do it. So what do I do in a situation like that, where I'm looking at possible structural damage to my house because of something that was mandated, and I wasn't even asked if I wanted?
I just want to address this. I didn't get your address.
18 Ada Court.
Ada?
Radoffa Coventry Drive.
Okay, thank you.
But, I mean, it's concerning, which now is going to make me go out and talk to three different reputable plumbers and see what they can do. That's not even costing, that's not even the cost of what it's going to cost to put my yard back together and everything else. I mean, I don't understand what you guys don't get. This is not, no one can afford it. I can see if it was within reason, couple thousand or something, okay. But when you're looking at structural damage to people's homes, I mean, what happens then? If my house starts to crumble away, can I hold anyone who voted it in responsible? I doubt it, so too bad for me, right? And it's going to happen to a lot of people.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir. None.
Tom Waters, 30 Lower Lane. You know, I've addressed the council many different times about what's going on in the campground, and I would hope that they would look into the information that they asked for and that they maybe could get some resolution to the problems out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, one more question.
Okay.
Gabe Woodyhill, 586 Old Main Street, Nick. In building communities, there's always creativity that hasn't been thought of before. Bills being passed, resolutions being drafted, things. In your experience, the question of the answers that the town is expecting, the taxpayers are expecting, creatively, is there some other way besides coming to a meeting, posting it on some social media? Is there a way, print material, something, to take a look at the questions that have been addressed, say, over the last six months? Prioritize them, discuss them, maybe not a full answer, but at least information showing that you've discussed them? Question one, A, B, C, here's some thoughts. Question two, A, B, C, here's some thoughts. Something to put in writing, to offer to the people when they come in with an agenda. Say, here we are, here's what we've done. Are we allowed, are y'all allowed legally to do something like that? Or does that break some kind of a rule? Or I wouldn't say to, but it's just helping the community? That's my question.
Thank you.
Can't answer questions during the meeting.
Actually, I think that's a great suggestion. If people got questions on a public comment, et cetera, if they had something that could be presented in writing up here that could be in the record, that we would have reference for all of those specific questions, I would have no problem with addressing those and setting those as an agenda, then hand them in, and we could certainly address questions at a, you know, when we set the agenda. I'd have no problem.
Well, then why can't we, Graham, do that through the CAC? Why can't that be a task?
Do people have questions to present?
It's a wonderful task.
I mean, it's a little...
Oh, okay. Sure.
It's a wonderful task.
Kevin, are you all set?
Well, I just, I think there's one thing that I've observed, that people want it, and I think it actually took place, that people on Hazard Street wanted that project stopped. And the town council stopped it, suspended it. It suspended all construction of all sewers in the town until the sewer system was studied more thoroughly, so that they would have the ability to better understand why there was so much opposition. And they're doing that. And I know there are a lot of people who are unhappy with the prospect of, you know, the cost of sewers that was projected, but that is, I believe, due to a number of factors that have occurred over the last 25 years that need to be addressed. And the town council at the last meeting approved hiring, first they put the moratorium in immediately after our meeting at the high school, and I know, I see many of the faces here are the same faces that were at the high school, demanding that the sewer projects be stopped, and they were, and they were stopped. And the town council approved a study to do something about the sewer system, particularly the financing of the sewer system. And, you know, until we get that study, I think it's premature for anybody to conclude that the town council is just going to go ahead and just keep going with this sewer project. I can tell you, I've lived in Western Coventry for more than, I don't know, more than 20 years. I get calls from people in Western Coventry asking me if they're going to have a sewer, okay? West of 102, people who live near me, no one west of 102 is ever going to have a sewer, okay? I can say that safely. And that's how blown out of proportion this has become. It's something that needs to be looked at, but the rumor's spreading, and I'm not ascribing blame to anybody here, I'm just noting that I've got people calling me. It's, and it's just not true. The sewer system expansion is going to be very, very carefully planned the next time that it's undertaken by any town council because of what happened with Hazard Street. There's no doubt about it. And so I sit up here, I listen time after time. I think in some ways the town council is doing exactly what you ask them to do, and it's going to take time. I don't expect you to give them a standing ovation at every meeting, but I do observe, they are trying to do the things that you've asked them to do. And, you know, they moved the public comment up tonight so that you could be heard sooner. So I think they do care about what you think. So give it a chance. That's really it. That's all I wanted to address. I think I ran over my three minutes, and I apologize.
I think we've covered the 30 minutes, have we not? More than?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so next on the agenda, we have D, what?
I'd like to ask Mr. Waters to post the schedule for the budget hearings. It was approved and voted on by the council? I don't know, just in case it hasn't been. And then perhaps the next meeting, next council meeting, that could be attached to the agenda so people know when the public hearings are coming in the presentations.
I think everyone should know about the hearings as well as us. All right, D now, we're down to D, Mr. Waters, consent agenda for discussion and/or action. Update on the comprehensive community plan. Moving right along.
Yes, this item was added to the agenda at the request of Councilwoman Carlson. We have the for you, you should see a memo from our comprehensive plan consultant, Mason and Associates, and tonight we have our planning director, Ms. Caroline Wells, to discuss where the comprehensive plan is. Wells, would you like to come up to the podium, please?
Good evening. Hello. So in front of you, I gave you some handouts tonight, one is a memo answering Councilwoman Carlson's questions as best as they could. They did short notice on this, so, my fault.
Okay. I hate to...
No, no, he gave it to me, but I had to kind of figure out how much I wanted to give to them. And also an updated schedule, that's a staff-based schedule, not the consultant's schedule, which I've completely, yes, completely updated. And also, you have some interest in seeing who the community advisory committee might, the pool of applicants, so I've included those letters as well. And just to recap what the schedule is, because we are far behind schedule. The consultants were hired right about the turn of the fiscal year, and they were given a retainer of $30,000, which represents about 50% of their overall fee, just so you know, they have not billed us since then. But what happens in a comprehensive planning process is it's sort of divided into thirds. And the first third of the work that takes place is really data mining, looking at this census updates, housing, sales, land use, and sort of compiling that into a sort of data book. And by the way, all of this will be posted on the website this week. So that's where they are now, and they're roughly about 65% through with that data analysis. And I just got an existing conditions analysis in the last couple of weeks, which I actually haven't really dug into too much. But from that point, it sort of gives us the groundwork to go into the next section, which is really that sort of community-focused, where we really talk to people, we go to stakeholder meetings, create workshops. That's where our community advisory committee will really kick in, because they're going to be our sort of arms into the community and trying to get people in and motivated and excited about the plan. And so from that point, we look at the data, but we start talking to the community and developing a vision, start developing goals, implementing actions, and so we're really kind of building the framework of the plan itself. Then we go into the last part of it, where we're really just writing out the text and making it all connect, making the data and the graphics and the maps all make sense within that community vision framework. And then we run it right back through the community again and say, you know, is this what you thought you were giving us when we went to ask you the first time around? So that's generally the process. January 31st, as you noted, is the planning commission's meeting, where they will be talking about the advisory committee, hopefully getting them on board, so that we can have a meeting with them very soon, because what we're going to have to do is obviously schedule out those public meetings and let everybody know. So, you know, anybody's obviously welcome to come and see what's going on. We'll be creating a page on the town's website dedicated to the comprehensive plan, we'll be posting drafts, maps, data, so everything should be out there, able to see, and of course, people can contact me as well. And so it's going to be an intense six months, but we think that we will have, the consultants are saying a draft by end of spring, I'm going to say a little bit more like late summer, early fall, with maybe an approval in the fall, the fall season. We have been in contact with statewide planning, sort of changed their tune. I mean, I came from working at statewide planning and interviewing comp plans. It's not quite as top-down as it used to be, it's much more collaborative with communities. So they're not really cracking the whip over us, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're showing good faith with them and that we're all in the same team. So that's it. If you have any questions.
I do a couple. Just to clarify, how are, do you have any idea at this point how the committee is going to be set up? Is it going to be one panel and then charrettes? Or is it going to be a panel and how, I, from the way past ones have been explained to me how they were done, obviously, pretty much none of us were born then because it's so old, but how are they, how are you structuring it? Do you have any ideas at this point?
I have my own ideas, but I have to talk with the planning commission and make sure that we all have the same ideas. They're not just a panel, they're actually sort of conduits. They're the stakeholder representatives at the table. So, you know, I come from a staff and a text standpoint, the planning commission comes from a regulatory standpoint, but they're the other that comes from the community standpoint. So we need to kind of milk that for what it's worth. And so they're going to be at the table when we write the documents, but they're also going to be given responsibilities to go out and bring, you know, 20 people to the workshop or handout or spread the word or whatever. They're sort of our agents in the community.
So do you think, and I appreciate your answering all these questions, I should have said thank you in the first place, I apologize for that, because it's good to see a schedule. Do you think there is a, I know you haven't gotten 20 or 30 applications. You're kind of limited. So is there going to be a bigger campaign to get the word out? Because this is so important. This determines the future of our town, and we've ignored it, and I've kind of asked for a strategic plan, which is sort of like the comp plan, but I think could go along hand-in-hand with the comp plan. I'm just really concerned that there's so many changes that we've gone through in the last decade, that we really have to be careful with this. So I want, I hope that we get like a room, half a room would be wonderful.
I agree, but I think it's going to be all hands on deck. I think that, and I don't know Coventry that well, and I've only been here since September, but it does seem a bit disjointed in its ability to communicate. And so, you know, you can pull through your website, but also through media sources, but it's really word of mouth here seems to be the most powerful mechanism. So, you know, we'll try everything.
So we're, sorry. So we're pretty much all right with the state at this point?
Yes.
Okay, because we don't want to get in any more trouble than we are now. Okay, good. So right now, we're at probably about the halfway point of what we've allotted for the funding for this comp plan.
Yes.
And you think we'll stay on budget or a little under budget, maybe? That'd be good, but probably on budget?
Well, it is possible with these consultants to stay under budget, but honestly, if we had any wiggle room, I'd love to, I'd love to find some better mechanisms than a plan like this there to communicate with people. If we could, if we could find a way to publish or communicate something a little bit thinner, a little bit more reader-friendly, I'd like to, I'd like to get to that point.
That would be good.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions?
Yes?
One quick question. If anyone sitting here tonight wants to be on the Coventry, this commission?
Uh huh.
How do they apply? How do they do it?
They could just send me an email.
Okay.
We had an open advertisement throughout the month in November, that's how we got the applications that we have. But yeah, if they can get me anything by, you know, the 31st, I'm sure I can bring it before the planning commission.
Could you give everyone your email in case anyone's sitting up here?
Sure. It's Caroline Wells, U E L S, at Coventry R I dot org. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for coming up and sharing that information with us. We appreciate it for sure. Okay, next on the agenda, E. We're going to write it down, E1. Mr. Waters or Mrs.?
Ms. Waters. This is you, Mr. Waters.
Application for new private detective license for Robert Fancioko, 10 Raymond's Point Road.
Okay. Is the gentleman here? Very good. Okay. How do you pronounce your name?
Sir?
Fancioko.
Fancioko, okay. Good evening. This is a new license, right?
Yes, because...
For Coventry.
Yes, because you can't transfer it over.
Right. Okay. We have the information in front of us.
16 years west of Warwick, so, I don't know, I guess I just keep a resident Coventry, so I have to transfer it over. And I believe you should already have the bond stated in Coventry.
We have the application in front of us. We do, okay. All right. That's confirmed. Any questions of the council?
The suit's been cleared by the police department, so I look at the motion and approve.
Yes, okay. So we all entertain a motion then?
You just made a motion.
Oh, you made a motion.
I'll second it.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Guys, have it. Congratulations and good luck, and we appreciate you moving to Coventry. All right. Next, E2. A little boy on this one. We all have E2 in front of us.
Application for class F license for Our Lady of St. Gerber Church.
Okay, and this is for the, what, February 11th, anniversary of emerging Our Lady Chestnut with St. Vincent de Paul. We have the information in front of us. And any questions from the council? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
No, I'm sorry, I do. Normally, we will waive the fee for these. I think we should waive the fee again.
Okay.
It is $15, right?
Right.
Okay.
I need to ask a question of the solicitor. Mr. Solicitor, I attend mass at both of those churches, do I need to recuse myself from this?
You good, Chuck, Bill, guy?
I really don't give legal advice to members of the council about recusal, but, you know, always err on the side of caution. I recuse myself from this role.
Okay. All right, so noted. Anyone wants to make a motion to accept then?
I'll make a motion to accept with the waiver of the $15 fee.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded to approve and also waive the $15 fee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's four votes with one recusal. Very good. Thank you. Welcome back. All righty. Number three, E. Yeah, all righty. Mess up with the charges.
Applications for renewal of campground licenses.
Okay, Mr. Moore, I know that this has been tabled and it had been previously given out to us. I don't know, we don't have any additional information, I don't think in our packets.
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I think the reason it was tabled was to ask at least one or two of the applicants to come, and I believe that they have done that. I see their counsel here, Mr. Anderson.
Okay.
So...
And then I didn't know.
Is that?
The information from the chief, have we got that regarding the past questions, or is it just the legal counsel of the campground owners?
So the chief just responded three hours ago to a couple of inquiries. There are roads within the campground, such as Blue Heron Road, this is, forgive me, I'm not sure which campground this is for.
Waters Edge.
Waters Edge, where there were incidents in the past, but because it's within the campground, I guess their first review of the campground backgrounds didn't show up. So after a more thorough review of the campgrounds and looking at the roads within the campgrounds, they discovered more issues. So, that being said, I don't know. I...
No explanation of the issues.
Unfortunately, the chief isn't here because he has the flu and the major has the flu and the email was sent three hours ago.
Okay, so what is our next move, Mr. Solicitor? Do we, one at a time on the issues that may not have concerns?
Well, I think it's been the procedure of the council to receive approval from the police department of the reissuance of the license, if I'm not mistaken. Ms. Carlson, isn't that?
Right, but now we don't, I'm sorry, but we don't have...
Right, we don't have it. I mean, we're still considering...
And I had asked for information from the fire chiefs for, well, there would be two, or fire marshals, and we haven't gotten anything. I did get one from Western.
We've been, Chief Brown sent some information a few hours ago as well. Yes. So if the council, if the council does not feel comfortable acting on these tonight, I would advise the council that we continue to table it in light of these, in light of the latest information. But if you feel comfortable voting tonight, you can vote.
Is that for all, for all three or one?
I mean, should we approve it?
I don't have that information.
We're ready to revoke these licenses at any time if anything's up anyway. I mean, well...
You can, and they come up for renewal.
Again, it doesn't say what your issue, because originally, it had all the approvals, correct? Everything?
Yes, last year, these three campground were approved.
But I mean, as far as the recommend, I'm sorry, not approvals, recommendations from the appropriate departments.
Yes, correct. And it wasn't until just recently, today, that the police chief came forward with more detailed information about issues that have happened within the campgrounds.
But also last year, we had police reports in our packets. In December, when this first came to council, we had the three pieces of paper that were their license renewals, we had no backup information.
I don't recall those in the packets in December.
Three pieces of paper, no, no backup, nothing, no reports, nothing to go with it. And I think the discussion still needs to be, there, you know, what's, as we talked last year, year-round camping, residency, did we hear back from the school department? Good question. Did we hear back? Did we hear back from them?
If I may, I think we did have some concerns concerning students that would be attending the schools, I guess, until we get a little more details, I'm fine with, we do have attorney here and one of the campground owners, you know, if we have questions for that particular campground while they're here, certainly, we should be able to ask him. But I was hoping to get something on the students that are attending school.
You can, I've not heard back from the school superintendent, I did email him to see if he could provide further information about the, we brought up last time, he did provide some very generic information about temporary students being in the campgrounds.
Could be a legal thing too, with regard to voting, yeah, that's fine.
And we don't, I'm sorry, we still don't know what the confirmation of the campsites, there's been conflicting information. I don't know, I don't think we're making a decision with the right information, I mean, I know.
So, you, Councilwoman Carlson, you presented me with a series of questions.
Right.
On December 11th, excuse me, yes, and then when we discussed it at the council meeting, I believe all the information was in order at that time. However, there were some additional questions regarding the schools, and I believe, looking into mail being received at the campgrounds.
Right, I was, I went to one of them today, I went over to, drove down Peckham Lane, and there were several mailboxes that I don't think all belonged to residents. I mean, it's just a question of, you know, I know Mr. Wabassiniar, back in 2007, when this all came up, made a public comment that he was opposed to granting year-round operating status. I feel the same way, I agree with Mr. Wabassiniar on that. And he had good reasons for it too, but, you know, I know it got changed because one of the owners of one of the campgrounds actually was president of the town council, and this ordinance went through to do year-round camping, 20% issue.
If I may add a comment on that, I think I voiced my opinion last time on it. We receive taxes from these campgrounds for 12 months. If we're going to deny them the ability to do business in the winter, then we should prorate their taxes. We're getting taxes from these campgrounds, they do have a right to run business the whole year, it's been put in there, allowed 20%.
It was due to them, it wasn't a right.
It's been, it's been like this, I've been on the council for eight years, it's been like this, they were allowed to do business for 20% of the campground, they're allowed to do business. It's only fair to the owners, who, how can you not allow them to do some kind of business for the, please let me finish. How can you not let them do business for 12 months, where we're collecting taxes for them for 12 months? Granted, we should enforce some regulations and so on, but who agree to tell them you can't do business in the winter? I mean, they have a right, there are legitimate people that want to camp and do winter camping.
But, Kerry, I agree with you that it was legitimate, but I'm not certain, and I thought you were tied there that it is.
Okay.
That as a year-round living, not camping.
All right, Mr. Gorm?
Yeah, I do remember last time, pretty distinctly, that we, I was asked to contact Mr. Anderson and to ask him to bring his, the applicant, I think it would be Ayo Ho and Waters Edge, for any questions you may have. And I corresponded with him, and I told him we'd have a fair public hearing tonight for his clients, and there, I think someone is with Mr. Anderson, I'm assuming it's the applicant, so if you have, Mr. Anderson, are you here with the owner or the applicant?
I am, and I'll be happy to address the council.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what we wanted, and as far as, you know, the information that we have from the colonel is just too ambivalent at this point to make a decision. Nonetheless, since we're here gathered, why don't we get the information from the applicants?
Police reports are ambivalent though.
Well, I couldn't understand from what the town manager read, what the situation is with whatever it was, Blue Heron Street.
Let me, let me just say, I don't feel comfortable presenting the police information tonight. There is 11 pages that were emailed to me about three hours ago. I would recommend that the council do not make a decision tonight, but you continue to table this issue until we can get more definitive answers. There was information, I did disperse the questions to all the departments, the fire department, the school department, the police department, planning and zoning, they have gotten back to me at various times with various information. It wasn't until a couple hours ago that the final information came in, and I now have time to comb through it all and present it in a format to the entire council. So, regardless if you hear the applicants tonight, my recommendation to the town council is to continue to table this matter until I can present you with everything that has been requested.
Well, I think that's a good suggestion. I think while we have the council here for the campgrounds, not to make him have to come back again.
Right.
We could ask the questions that want to be asked, and then wait for the information. Within three weeks, Mr. Waters, we ought to have any and everything we need to vote on it for February 12th. I think a couple of my councilpeople might be interested in voting tonight, but at your suggestion, I will wait one more meeting. It shouldn't take this long to approve three campgrounds, and it's not rocket science. Either we get the information or we don't. We get it from the school, we get it from the fire department, and we get it from the police. Then, on February 12th, Lincoln's birthday, I personally want to vote on it. Tonight, Mr. Anderson, if you want to step forward, and then, Mr. Gorm, as far as, or the council, who has the questions, come on up and use the mic if you would, sir. And if you don't mind, some, some questions might be coming your way. I think you volunteered to come and answer any questions, so, sometimes volunteerism can be tough, but welcome and good evening, and thanks for coming back, because I know you've been here a few other meetings, as well as us, so, good evening.
I guess I'll be back on the 12th too.
Yeah, you need to be, yep.
I did want to, so, at the last meeting, as far as I was, my understanding was that it was basically one question really raised, and I realize we've now taken a step backward as far as the police department. We did, and I do have a copy of it, so, as of November 17th, they had no issues with the campgrounds, so I'm curious to find out what new information has transpired. But I did want to address the school issue. I don't know what you're going to get from the school department on, please inquire, but the report that Mr. Graham gave was that the school department reported that there were potentially two temporary students at the campgrounds, and I'll share what we know about those two students. There is.
Please do.
A high school student. He's been at the school since early 2017. His parents were separated, mother lived in West Greenwich, father lived at Ayo Ho Campground. This student previously was attending Exeter West Greenwich School System. His mother passed away, necessitating a child coming to live with father. Now, it happens close, this child didn't choose to go there. And interestingly happens, it's the caretaker's child, which under your ordinance, the caretaker is an absolute, unquestionable year-round resident of the campground, absolute right to boost child through the school system. As far as I know, and you may have this information already, but I emailed it to Mr. McGee, and I shared it with you. The second child that we were aware of, again, was a unfortunate situation where the child's living situation was placed into a severe degree of upheaval, and the child had to come live with the grandmother, grandmother's living in the campground at the time. It was a temporary situation. I believe the child's mother also moved in with the grandmother on a temporary basis. That child was then enrolled in Coventry School System. None of those individuals, and I'm going back now, I believe it's in 16, none of these individuals in the campground anymore. Now, that's not to say the child isn't still in the school system. I don't know, the child may have moved someplace else in Coventry, I don't have a clue. Now, another issue was brought up, and some hostility directed at the notion that parents might have children, and they weren't paying taxes. How dare they enroll their child in the school system and not be paying their fair share of tuition? Out of that glaring oversight, landowners pay taxes, not tenants. If I own breakup property, my tenants can tend the school system, they don't pay taxes, I do. So, why we're crucifying children, their parents, because they didn't pay the taxes? My clients, and I do not represent Avery Ridge, I can only speak in behalf of Ayo Ho and Waters Edge, pay a commercial tax rate, they pay personal property taxes on trailers, on many of them. They're paying a disproportionate amount of taxes. You have individuals who get massive tax breaks because they call massive real estate holdings, open space, and farm forests, get to put their kids in the school, and pay less. I don't know, I, the tax issue confuses me when you look at the revenue that these campgrounds bring up to town on a tax basis. And then just business-wise, why in the world is council seeking to harm these businesses which bring in thousands of people in summer, some year-round, to support your local businesses, restaurants? I mean, it, I just don't understand the constant hostility directed toward the campgrounds. Why this license is picked apart is beyond me.
I'll have you a few questions. Thank you for that information, any personal questions, or questions in general for Mr. Anderson while he's here tonight? Beyond what he's got on topic?
That was a concern of mine, if you ask me, that was a concern of mine.
Mike? I can't hear you.
Something's going on. You mean, that was a concern of mine, the tax rate, I know they pay a commercial rate, what, I mean, we could find out, but tell them, what is the tax bill, what are they paying, you know?
I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, I don't either, we could, you know, find that out. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't costing the rest of the taxpayers, but you did make a good point, that, you know, that you get into a public housing or something where there's a, you know, large apartment complex, and landlord is paying, you know, the taxes on it, and not the residents, so I get that, and it's not the children's fault that whatever situation happens, but I just don't, you know, as far as you know, there's, you don't know if they're still in the school system, or was it a temporary thing, or we were referring to it was temporary, is it still a temporary case?
Well, it was temporary, and one I maintain is absolutely has the right to, is trampled in full-time.
Well, he's a caretaker, sure he lives there.
He's there, he's a senior, so it's temporary, but he's going to graduate, but only by the quirk of the fact that he's a senior, is it temporary?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I would also just, there's been this, there's the health and safety issues, which is what the license is based on, and then we keep creeping into this whole issue of residency. I strongly suggest you read your ordinance, I strongly suggest you revisit history, and I strongly suggest you also start looking at some of the dates of your ordinances, and when these campgrounds created, Ayo Ho was almost 100 years old. During the Enabling Act for the campground legislation was done, Mr. Gorm knows, 1960, 1965. Coventry got around.
1960.
And then amended in 1965, and expanded in 65. Zoning ordinance, since that also seems to come out of that. Coventry didn't have a valid zoning ordinance until 1982, if I recall. These campgrounds predate all of their ordinances, all of them. And even if we were to agree that there is a 20% limit, which for the sake of argument, I will agree to at the moment, not that I'm agreeing to that as a factual basis, even if for the sake of argument tonight, we did, I would check the language. I think you're going to find, oh, I have it too, back office. And we find the word residency is foremost in that ordinance, and this may or may not be the proper form to figure out the residency issue. Should you deny a license, and you choose to remove people from the campground, think about the liability you're opening yourself up for if it turns out they have the absolute right to be there.
Is that a threat? Absolutely.
A threat.
Yeah, a threat, yes, if we don't do this, you'll do it.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Why don't we save the legal debates for another day, tempting as they may be to indulge, let's just talk about the license. Thank you.
And that would be what, Water, Avery Ridge?
Avery Ridge.
Yes, come on forward, sir, just to say you're here, you own the other campground, and if you'd be so kind to answer any questions that may come your way, otherwise, we are thinking that we're going to move this to the next meeting.
Field of Dreams, number four, Western.
That's all right, we get your name and address. All right, good evening, and.
Good evening to all of you, and all of you.
Would you like any general statements to make first, or we just open up to any questions?
I'd like to make one point.
Okay.
I think Mr. Anderson pretty much spoke anything that I need to cover, and I don't think anybody needs to hear my little bitty petty complaint, although I was sent a letter stating to be here tonight.
Right.
And I was here in December, and the captain came up, and he did say that, he didn't have a problem, I remember him saying that, I have no reason to lie to any of you. And I'm going to be honest with you, I wasn't here at the last meeting because I didn't think I had to be. I was recently gifted half of that campground, my brother was gifted the other half, probably some of you know that. But I really didn't think I had to be here, because when I left that night, it just looked like everything was in order, there was one thing that was missing from one of the campgrounds, but it wasn't from me, so I just figured everything was here.
Fair enough.
So, I just want to say, I know how hard it is to everybody to do what you guys did tonight.
To us.
I know how hard it is for you, there was no vulgar language, and nothing was thrown in the room.
Anyway, any, before you sit down, any questions of the council? Mr. Ponfret, thank you for coming tonight, and we'll do the best we can in the next meeting, February 12th. All right, any other comments regarding this matter before we entertain a motion maybe to move it to the next meeting, borrowing the information we need? Do we have a motion to that effect?
No.
Okay, a second?